Be vigilant, that's part of democracy too. I think Jefferson talked about that. You have to keep coming. That's how you learn. You can't just come to one meeting. All right. It's true. Next year it's going to be different because I peeked at the numbers, right? We're talking 25, 26, 27 kids, 3rd, 4th, 5th grade. I don't think the community is going to go for it. Okay. I would not go for a higher than 2% this year. I guess quite frankly, I don't think it's needed. Next year though, I think you have to have 2% budget and a 4% budget to look at that difference. Because when you look at classes of 26th, 4th, 5th grade, this guy is going to get his neighbors to vote. Because the no vote is flat. It's always the same. It's the yes vote in the district, the district goes up and down. And when people feel threatened, that's when they vote. They don't come out and vote when they're fat and happy. Okay. But, when we had the high school project in 2008, when the economy imploded, people said, "You're nuts trying to get this thing done." It got passed. Because lots and lots of people, there were 12 of us times 3, it was 36 people, Kelly was part of that, 36 people called people, people put lawn signs out, they worked hard for it. Okay. So that's the kind of stuff that happens. But at the same time, we need more context. Right? And another example, just a question I'll sit down. Two points made tonight that are unrelated and they weren't connected. Tough kids in the district. True. All right. I might even tell you where I hear about it. I hear about it every day. We have less kids going outside the district, right? What, 64, 16?
According to their document, down to 16 from 64, yes.
Okay, so there's less kids going out. Which is why you need more people here. Because the kids we're keeping in the district may save us money. But those kids are spitting and kicking teachers and other people. True. Okay. They're tough kids. Kids with severe autism and things like that, that five years ago would have been outside the district and aren't now. So we're saving money, but there's also a cost there to what happens with classmates on people. So you, the point I'm trying to make about this is, you've got to have a context for what's happening there. Okay, the district is shrinking. These are tough decisions, there's no doubt about it. But these five individuals, and I have to say, I told them that in email, is the best board I've seen so far. You may not agree with them, but they have been responsive and they thought about it and if you came to the meeting in December, I'd be at the point saying that maybe the case wasn't very strong, but they thought about it. They anguished about it. Okay. And, the best thing about democracy is, run against them. Right? Don't give them term limits. Run against them. Because I think they're doing a really good job, not purpose. All right? And sometimes, they have to tell the folks over here, provide us more information. Okay? Because the grade level schools before we're going to see on February 28th, I would like to have seen on October 3rd, for Franklin. You would have got a lot more support, not from everybody, but you would have got more support from people who were in the middle, if they had seen that level of document.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you this evening? I'm from Haiti. I have a kindergarten parent and a 3rd grader right now, in Hagan. What, I thought I knew what the current max for contract with the teacher for class size for elementary is right now. What is that now?
Upper grades are 28. I believe the primary grades are more like 25.
Okay. So when that gets renegotiated, in June, that can change?
It could.
Okay. I didn't know what the current allowance was and in years past, what's the highest amount that was ever in low grades, K through 5?
I know you had your child, or bigger one, 25 or 26.
Okay.
And actually, if you want to go back along, my daughter was in a 26, 27 second grade.
Yeah, and I fully understand that other school districts have class sizes that are larger than ours. And again, we go back to the purchase homes for the purpose of having small class. I just didn't know what the maximum was. And knowing that this year, then contracts will change and that will be readdressed.
Possibly.
I wholeheartedly agree that had a concrete plan, you've spent years researching this, the public didn't know about it. We couldn't stand behind what we didn't thoroughly know about, a lot of us weren't aware. However, after all those years of research, had a concrete plan been handed out in October, I think it would have quelled a lot of what's going on now. And it doesn't matter, you know, it's behind us. With that said, the document that I spent an hour and a half reviewing, and I know we'll address this on the 28th, a lot of information's hard to find. Because for those of us that have the youngest children in kindergarten, or especially, you know, 1st grade, with siblings in the same school. So we have a twofold transition of, the child is going to new school and leave their other sibling at the same time. It was hard to find information on that document, when you propose to do their transitional orientations, proposed dates, months. Can you direct me to what part of the document? Because I saw information for 3rd grade, schools being open early for people to feel free to tour them. But I didn't see any concrete, may children will get an orientation from K through 2, or K through 1?
Dates are in the appendix. Do you remember offhand?
I didn't find anything for K through 2. 2, 14, 15.
There is a list of dates. And it's in the appendix.
While you're sitting there waiting for us to get into our talk.
Which, I looked and looked and I assumed it was there.
If you give it, I can find it for you pretty quickly.
I'm glad that I came tonight and it brings upon greater concerns that we started looking into last year. We, you were gracious enough to present Race to Nowhere. And we started opening up the question of, what are we doing? What are we doing with these children as far as their stress is? And as Dr. Powell stated earlier, our school district is already feeling the effects for many reasons. There's social reasons, there are environmental reasons, there are educational pressures that are now being seen at greater numbers than they've ever been seen before, that are emotionally, there are emotional illnesses, there are physical ailments, and we're now seeing at elementary levels that were never seen in the past. Why did we discontinued that? We started going forward with that and we, and we were on a good, we were on a good path. Because the bigger issue, regardless of grade level schools and class sizes and budget, is, our children are in trouble with the current grade levels. One of my biggest concerns about next year is, our teachers are now going to have to, with new core standards, getting that under their belt, guiding these young children through transition. And even if we're all happy, cheerleading, thrilled about it, it's still transitioned, so teachers are in new schools, guiding young children through transition with new curriculum. We already haven't met for two years in a row at middle school, the test scores we need to meet. We need to go back to the focus of Race to Nowhere, in the middle. Well, this, I don't know where you'll find the time, or the energy, but that is the real bigger concern of mine is, grade level schools, cutting teachers, cutting sports, clubs, is going to increase children becoming ill, children having emotional problems. Scores going down at all levels. So regardless of how we're configured, we have to go back as a community and a board and refocus our energy where we were last spring for that, no matter how we're structured. And again, the board and the community being in unison on budgets, on major decisions, with more information in the correspondence that, you know, is going on, is key for all of it. But why did, why did that initial swing towards maybe moving forward with curriculum? I know, or I'm under the impression that state guidelines dictate far more now so than ever, the curriculum that the teachers have to teach. With that said, we seem to have the view as a community that we could do something about it and then it kind of just fell off the chart of that. So why was that?
I'd have to look into that. It was really a high school initiative. It wasn't a district initiative per se. And so I would have to check with people and see what the reason was.
And anybody that reviewed it, and you stated tonight, elementary school students are affected. So it's not, it's not just a high school, it's not a high school issue. And while the high school students are most impacted and have for the longest time been impacted, our middle school and elementary school children are impacted as well. We now have a situation where our elementary school children are top of the curriculum standards and requirements that they're forced by the state to meet. And the teachers are forced to cram into a day's time, which I beg you not to go to hefty kindergarten. I don't know how a kindergarten teacher would be able to go through everything that's needed, which I think is ridiculous, that the schools are forced to force them to do this. So that's another issue, unless you do a whole curriculum overhaul. I don't know how a kindergarten teacher would do that in a half day. And working parents can't, can't do that at 7 o'clock at night after dinner and trying to do everything else. Everything that you stated earlier will continue to increase if class sizes are larger, with less staff, with less clubs, with less sports. All of these additional things help keep our children's educational well-being at a maximum and their emotional well-being at a maximum. And so regardless of how we go, that has to be all of our focus collectively. And I know we need money to do that, but I know that we can figure it out as a community. We're one of the, one of the highest educated and motivated communities, I think, out there. I think that's it.
I'm going to respond right now. Because I think you're, you're right on target. And I mean, I've said this, I don't know how many times. Half of what you talked about is what these meetings should be about, in my opinion. Unfortunately, the whole budget issue has gotten wider and wider. I mean, it takes up half the year. And I said the same thing, the Race to Nowhere, we came to discussion from nowhere. I mean, I think it was a very, very good thing. And I mean, I went to those meetings, the sidebar meetings, it was awesome. And I don't know what happened and I think it needs to be brought up again. Because I think these meetings, and I realize we have to administer the district, I mean, it is a large entity, $40 million, a lot of students, a lot of staff, it has to be administered. But to me, the idea of school board local control is to talk about, you know, how do we want to teach our children and do the best? And I think this court, while this court curriculum is, you know, has dictates, it gives plenty of latitude to go to the teachers and, I mean, there's so much that can be done with it, that we can really go forward. And I think everyone needs to be aware that, you know, and I'll say this now too, I mean, I was the first to, you know, to thank the teachers for their give back. The reason that that was even possible is one of the great things that has happened in the last years, you know, put together this district leadership team where the officers of the board, and administration, and the bargaining units get together like once a quarter and talk about these issues. And I mean, there's a trust being built, it's different sending memos. We get together and, you know, budget, you know, grade level was something that was discussed and then, you know, budgets are discussed. But this is where, if we really wanted to distinguish ourselves, this is where the conversation needs to be had.
And I know when tough decisions are coming up, like things such as grade level schools, you can't separate, okay, we're going to have one Board of Ed meeting just pertaining to GLS and the rest. Because what's happened this year is, everything else is getting swept under the rug. Everything else is kind of, we're doing the best to tread water.
Exactly.
But there are huge curriculum issues that really need to be looked at. There are, there are discrepancies, the fact that there's discrepancies between two elementary schools with only 118 kids graduating is shocking. Because after, I didn't realize we had difference in test scores. We have difference in class sizes, that, how can we compare test scores of two different schools, even though they meet the same guidelines, are using two different curriculums? Like comparing Granny Smith to Mathis Tosh. I mean, there, it, well, one of the, one of the big benefits of the initial presentation was aligning either the series of text views?
There was only one text that was different.
Then how was that an asset? If there's only one text that differs, why would that be a huge asset to?
I think you were talking about all of the 1st grade teachers working together in the same.
Yeah, the curriculum.
Yeah, yeah. But the two separate. One is teachers working together, no matter what the text is.
Right.
And Dr. Powell's talking about there are two actually different texts in the two of the documents.
Okay. Then let me rephrase that. If we're, if we're not already aligned per grade, in how they go about their year and how they go about what they're doing, how can we compare their test scores?
Compare with the state? Compare with every school in the state?
Absolutely, but we have two schools doing two separate things.
That's not, I think it's not exactly true, but I mean, they're, they're not talking together.
Well, I know they're not doing opposite ends of spectrum things, but it was, it was posed to us parents that it definitely would be a benefit if they were together so that it was aligned. And then I thought about it later and I went, if we're not already aligned with only two schools, how do we even compare them with our own school? Forget about the state standards. Because there can, there are variables there that come into play. With what's being taught, how it's being taught, and how.
Even from classroom to classroom.
From classroom to classroom, which definitely does benefit our children. And it benefits, let's face it, you're all trying to meet the scores, the teachers are trying to all meet the scores, nothing you guys can do about it. You're held to a standard by the state. So if that, you know, if that benefits it, but our children's level of anxiety is increasing and I see it in my own home, with the amount of work they do all day, with the amount of work they do at home. And there are ways these children can learn everything that's required of them and still be children. And not be sitting at a desk every afternoon and still have fun and learn what they need to learn to pass those tests. And pass them better than they are right now, obviously.
Hello, Nancy Cox, 31th Avenue. I just want to say that I think you guys are doing a great job. And I really, I agree with what Marty said, okay, I mean, I think that you guys have been very responsive to the community, taking community input. And the fact that there had been such a large turnout at these meetings shows that the community does feel that they can speak to you. And I think that in the past, you have been receptive to what they've said. And like Marty said, just because you didn't get your way doesn't mean it wasn't considered. And I think that you guys did, I like when you said that you guys really did anguish over, I think, all these decisions, because they are anguishing decisions, you know? And, and I think that what people need to realize is that you guys are not the enemy. And that, you know, you all absolutely have the best interests of the children at heart. You wouldn't be doing this job, you know, if, if you didn't. I mean, why else would you be here? And, you know, people are acting as if, you know, the money is going in your pocket or something. And it's not. I mean, obviously you want to do what's best for the kids and Albany has your hands tied and there's not much you can do. I mean, we'd all, you know, you'd all like to do everything and add more and do more for the kids, but Albany's not letting you. So I really strongly support what Tom said, that, you know, rather than taking out your hostilities on this board, their hands are tied. You really need to contact your politicians and say that, because they're the only ones who can do anything. So I really just wanted to let you know that, I really do think that you guys are doing a great job under very difficult circumstances. And I would like to see the community be more supportive of that and understand that it's not us versus them, that, that, you know, you're trying to do what's best for the community, but your hands are tied by all of this. No, thank you.
Scott Snackner, 10th Ray Carone. I just wanted to really urge you to consider the importance in contract negotiations of the health insurance issue. Last summer, the state employees, their health insurance, their contributions now 16% for individual, but more importantly, 31% for family plans. If we went to that immediately, we'd have virtually no budget gap. If we do it over three years, it would put a major, major dent in the gap in each of the next three years. That's public employees. I think that should be a starting point for where we should be thinking about negotiations. That may be hard to swallow, I realize, with teachers. Another option you might consider is putting a cap on how much the district can put towards health insurance each year. Say a 2% cap. And if the health insurance actually doesn't go up that much, teachers' contribution could actually go down. But it would protect the district heading forward against the large gaps with the tax cap. Particularly a way of trying to work the tax cap. I mean, the state looked at it in terms of the pension benefits, where over 2% or cost of living is not counted against the tax cap. And I think we need to look at health insurance the same way, so it's not driving us $400,000, $500,000 over the tax cap just from health insurance alone in a way we're rejecting things. So that can make a really big difference. And I hope you consider that as you go through negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Oldman Driver. Just a quick question. You referenced GLS as being a major source of savings in terms of the overall budget in 1.3, close to 1.3, that we have to cut. If that's such, if that's the biggest chunk that is going to save out of everything you posed up there, why isn't, why, why was that decision so far in advance of the budget decision?
Because it was something we were looking at for a couple of years. And it's something that requires planning the rest of the year to be able to accomplish.
Mm-hmm. But I guess my question is, it shouldn't, I understand it takes planning, but if that's your major reason why you presented to the community as a plus, is the cost savings, that it should have given, I mean, it shouldn't have been such a rushed decision. It should have been a decision more aligned with the timeframe of the budget. And it's not like you, you know, presented this GLS and gave such a substantial plan to go along with it, hearing and, and you had all this time in advance to go over that plan. Like, the decision was made and it was passed without all that thought into it in terms of the plan. I was just wondering why it doesn't have been more aligned with the timeframe.
I think, you know, part of the reason that the details weren't in the first plan is that we, A, didn't know for sure if the board was going to do it. And when they made the decision in December to go with grade level schools, they still hadn't at that point decided how many sections at each grade level. So when the October presentation was made, for example, we gave you a range of two scenarios. Everything from four sections per grade level to five sections per grade level. And until the board decided the exact number of sections, we couldn't develop a schedule, we couldn't know exactly things about how the staffing would work. So as the board was making decisions, we were refining certain elements of it. And I would say that many of the details were there already. Quite honestly, the maps were developed last summer for the most part. When we finalized who the principals were, they took another look at it and they've refined it somewhat and they still have more refining to do as they now work with their staffs to fine tune it to specific rooms. The transportation plan, after presenting it to the community and getting the feedback, we realized that that wasn't going to work for the community. But we had the bus routes, we tested the bus routes, Mr. McCall himself went on the bus route runs. It's not that the details weren't there, but the feedback we received said, this isn't going to work for us. And so, we put together the committee and refined that further. The schedule was tweaked a little bit. We started off with a 9:00 timeframe because we were able to work the schedule in such a way that then teachers would have professional development time, a chunk of time before school started. Now we've given that up for the sake of, you know, making it easier or better for parents in terms of getting their kids to school at an earlier time. And now we're down to 20 minutes for the professional development in the morning. So, you know, one of the engineers actually who's on the transportation committee said, no plan is ever developed and presented in its perfect format. You know, you're always tweaking it and we are still tweaking it. If you look at the plan online, it says bus routes will continue to change as we know what the enrollments are. We don't have kindergarten registration yet, we don't have daycare information, we don't get parochial school requests until April 1st. So it's constantly going to be updated to some extent. I mean, the basics will stay, the timeframe, some of the programs, you know, all of that will stay the same, but it's never in its final form. In fact, the concept behind continuous improvement, which the board has embraced, is that you don't ever accept something exactly as it is, that you're always trying to improve it and make it better for the greatest number of people.
And just wanted to reference what Mr. McCall's comments before, how, you know, these meetings before were hugely different from what they are now in terms of attendance. This is my second meeting I've ever been to. My kids aren't even in the school yet, they will be. And I just want to say that I think that, at least for my personal reason why I'm here is before, I think we all paid the high, you know, taxes willingly, because we all, you know, got what we wanted for our children. And maybe people weren't at the meetings, because I think our concerns for our children and our needs were well represented. And I think we're at a point where we feel our concerns and our needs for our children are not well represented. So, you know, alls I ask is, you know, in terms of everything, not just GLS, but in terms of, you know, the cuts that are being contemplated, you know, just maybe listen a little bit more. I know you can't, please, everybody, but just listen to what the vast majority of the community is saying, so that maybe we can feel that way again, that we are being represented and, you know, for us and our children what we want for them. Thanks.
Hi, Susan Lynch, Round Hill Road. When I looked at the three-year proposal, the three-year plan, particularly on the website, I couldn't help but think, it looked a lot like a slash and burn throughout the baby with the bathwater approach. And I just, I find it completely incomprehensible that we can't do better for our kids. We need something sustainable. You know, Scott was talking about the medical benefits. And I have, it makes it look absurd, question, I've worked in education for 20 years in a private school, which is different beast altogether. Is that the kind of thing that can be renegotiated in the spring? I mean, how does this work? Is it, it's a union thing? The, I'm sorry, the health benefits?
Health benefits are tied into the contract. Our contract actually expires the end of this year.
The teacher's contract.
The teacher's contract, I'm sorry. We do have several different bargaining units. So the teachers will expire the end of this year.
Administrators next year.
Next year. They have different years.
Custodians this year.
In between, it's very rare that a contract is opened. I mean, we heard last year, the teachers, the administrators, and many of the individuals in administration gave back money. That was unique to the county, definitely, probably most of the state. So, you know, there definitely are people that can be worked with, but they also have their members to answer to too. And it is a bargaining unit. So, that being said, when the contracts open up, well, obviously, the economy's different from what they were settled before, our perspectives are going to be different and there'll be negotiations, just like there are with any other contract. They'll have things that they're looking for, we'll have things that we're looking for, and at some point in time, we'll come to a consensus and probably adopt a new contract. It may not have everything we want, it probably won't have everything the bargaining unit wants, but somewhere there'll be enough to appease both sides of the table to get it passed. And we do look at all those things, we look at, the only thing that really is out of our purview is pension, because that's mandated by the state. So we can't negotiate pension, but anything else basically is negotiable.
Okay. And our teachers are phenomenal, I want them to be compensated fairly, but I mean, what's in place now just clearly isn't sustainable. And on another note, you had mentioned that what's a high school experience without a yearbook? And with all due respect, what's a high school experience without clubs and athletics and all of that? So it'll be interesting to see what these universities are even documenting.
Bethany Shackenberg, 10th Ray Carone. I have one question and a couple of comments. My question is regarding the high school greeter. In October, it was listed as a $43,680 position. And in the most recent reports, it's listed as $24,247. What accounts for the difference?
I'll have to look, I don't ever remember anything important, but I will double check.
It was in the, on the proposed cuts list at the October 30 meeting. One of my comments is regarding kindergarten teaching assistance. I feel that they're an invaluable asset and I think that a lot of parents can see to the positive impact they've had on their children. And I would encourage you to avoid that cut at all costs, at any level, because they are so important to the experience that our kids have making the program.
My other comment, Pat and Marty and Jennifer made some very good points about the resources that we have in our community and the body of knowledge that we have in our parents and our community members. And I would encourage the board to consider something along the lines of what the elementary school principals are doing with the principal's coffee, to sort of break down some of the barriers, but not as formal.
barriers, but not as formal, um, in interaction with the community, and maybe do a board coffee, and, and try to capitalize on some of those, those resources and the experience that we have in our community, in just a conversational, informal way.
Thank you.
Hello, Howard Payton. If somebody up front could, could write a letter, the gentleman on the left said, uh, you know, write Albany, if we could come up with a general letter that's appropriate for all us to send out and post it on the website, we could print it out and then send the, send the letters out.
We'll have it by the end of the week.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Hannenberg, I live on Battle Road. I am the current kindergartner and a four-year-old who will be here in two years. Um, the last board meeting I had asked about keeping the kindergarteners at Hagan instead of, um, having them transition this year from nursery, nursery school and pre-K to Hagan, and then again transitioning to Nassau next year, to wait a year to transition back to Hagan. And you guys said you'd think about it, have you given it any more thought?
Actually, I have talked to a, a community member about it, I've also spoken to the superintendent about it, um, and thinking about what ramifications that has, not only at Hagan, but then offering Nassau some of the same opportunities and what that would do. So have I been thinking about it? Yes, I'm not sure I have a position on it yet, because there are a lot of other things that would have to be involved as well. You were talking about, let's see, I've got this right, keeping the kindergarten that's currently in there, staying in Hagan.
Yes, yes.
And the incoming kindergarten would go to Nassau.
Yes, I, I have one thing coming, should we go to Nassau?
Yeah, yeah.
But just because they're already in Hagan and they just transitioned, everybody keeps talking that two years of transition, this was a transitional year for them, coming from pre-K and nursery school into Hagan. They have to change again next year, to wait a year to change back, I think, is a lot for, for the youngest population of our school, in my opinion.
Well, I, I kind of lost some of the, of...
Thank you.
I just wanted to suggest when you post that letter, which I think is a great idea, that maybe you post, um, the contact information for who people should send, who should send the letters to.
Okay, comments from the board.
Just would like to say one thing, and, you know, a lot of people have said, why, you know, why now we're coming up where the superintendent is presenting the plan, why at, you know, the end of this month, why not before? And I ask myself the same question a lot, why didn't we do this before? Why are we doing it now? And I couldn't help but go back and think about our training as board members, when we get trained, and the way the roles should be, the, the way the roles of the board and the superintendent are, if we look at things from that perspective, it makes clear sense why now, why not before? The board, the role that the board plays is definitely not to micromanage the school. We have the professionals to do that. The role of the board is to set the policy, to set the direction. And it didn't make sense to be spending all the time, all the money, all, you know, there's no money spent yet, but all the energy and the time of district staff to plan this whole thing if we were not gonna go through with it. So when we think about it that way, the role of the board as setting the direction, somebody at one training I went to said one time, think about the school district as a train. You, the board members, are gonna set the direction. The train is going from point A to point B, that's what you decide on doing as a board. And then you give the superintendent the direction, go ahead, show us how we're gonna do this, show us how you're gonna get us from point A to point B. So if you think about it that way, it makes sense that now, you know, we had enough information to help us figure out that, you know, we think this is a good direction that we need to go in, and then we gave the authority to the superintendent to say, go ahead, plan it, show us how you're gonna get us there. If we think about it that way, it makes sense why we didn't do all this planning before. The professional with all her staff, the principals, the district office staff, it's their job now to tell us how they're gonna get our train from point A to point B, and if we don't like what they're telling us, we can always, board members as well as the community, go back, ask questions, you know, the way we, you know, many most people did with the transportation, if we don't like this, figure something else. But you have to set the direction first. We can't spend all the time and energy planning something that we may or may not do. So i- in a sense, to me, that explains why things are happening the way they're happening. We set the direction, the superintendent drives the train and she gets us there.
I would just like to thank everybody for coming out. Howard's idea was a perfect example of the kind of thing that comes up when we get people out talking to us. Like Nancy also said, we're up here, we're not the enemy. We're trying to do what we think is the best for the school district, and the five of us spent a lot of time, putting a lot of energy and thought process into the things that we try to come up with, and although we may not always be what everybody's happy with, or what you personally don't like, we put a lot of effort into it. But it helps to have your input too, and it helps to give us ideas, because we can't think of everything. And just in the five, five years that I've been on the board, just to see it expand to this level is great. I'd like to see more, like Marty said, it's not perfect, but it's getting better, and hopefully we'll just continue to get that, and it helps us.
The only, the only thing I'll, I'll leave us with is, I mean, obviously the one thing, I think it's common theme is improving the communication. Um, so let's, I mean, we need to make that an immediate goal. I mean, we're coming into the, the heart of the budget season, so I'm open to ideas. I mean, there's a lot of mechanisms out there, but I have a feeling that they just, they're not working well, but I certainly don't have the answer. I've seen a lot of people say that they have trouble finding things on the website, so that's gotta be something we can improve. I mean, that's, that's not rocket science, but, um, I mean, we, we get information through Word docs a lot, so I, I'm not a public user going to the website other than to my teachers, my kids' teachers' webpage, you know, I mean, that's really the only thing I'm looking through. But for you to get information, you know, you need to, you know, and you can send that right to the superintendent, I mean, you can copy the board, you know, when, when are you having a problem finding something, quickly go, and then how can we make it more usable? Um, maybe we have too many, maybe that's the problem, is we have too many ways to communicate, you know, between the blog and the emails, and, I mean, we're trying to do that, but it's obviously not working. I mean, it's been heard, let's try and fix this, and let's try and fix it soon, because this is, this, we gotta get this done. And, um, I think it's important to note this three-year plan or whatever that you're seeing, I mean, that is, that is not even close to written in stone, so don't be taking that as that's a done deal. I mean, that's, that's what the administration has just come out with, posing to the board and the community, that's what we gotta discuss, that's what we have to debate, it's not, you know, so there's plenty of room to change that, all right, so don't, don't hold back to that. Uh, the board coffee, I love that idea, I think that's a great idea, um, you know, but let's, let's set a date, I mean, what are we gonna do? We gonna wait a month to figure this out? I mean, let's, you know, let's, let's get something going in the next, I don't know, let's set a date by the next board meeting when it's gonna happen.
I don't think we should wait that long.
Huh?
I don't think we should wait that long.
Well, it's not gonna be tonight, all right?
Have it tomorrow.
Coming after the sign, it's great.
Next Monday.
All right? All right, that's all I got, thanks. Um, I just, I guess, just want to thank the, the community, especially those that have showed up at the board meetings. I, I fully get, and I do the same thing, I want the best for my children. There's no two ways about it, and if it isn't gonna be the best, I'm gonna come out and tell somebody and try and change it, so I get where everybody's coming from. Um, so keeping the meetings civil and very cordial, and being able to have a give and take on the communication. I want to thank everybody in the room for, and anybody else who's attended the meetings in the last several months, because it has gone very well, and I appreciate it. Um, the idea is to have the dialogue, it's to bring out the ideas, and, um, just, all I can say is thank you, is the person that has to try and run this meeting. Um, the second thing is, um, I know some people said we're doing well, we, we have a long way to go, we're not a perfect board, no board is. Um, we strive to get better, we will continue to. Um, the people that put this plan together are pretty knowledgeable people, pretty talented, but it isn't perfect. Nothing is perfect. So what we're looking for, and especially at the next meeting, is point out deficiencies, point out areas maybe that weren't clearly spelled out, point out things that we can improve. When this goes forward, um, we want to have the best plan, the best programs in place for what's gonna happen, and it's you that are gonna help us do that. Um, it isn't something, and I think somebody said it, the more people involved, the better the end product is gonna be. So please, I know it's a lot of paper and a lot of pages and a lot of appendices, um, but take a look at it and come back with some decent feedback, because that is what's gonna make it work. Um, but I'm proud of everybody out there, thanks. Any other comments? Do you want your motion to adjourn? Adjourn, that is, I'm on paper. I got it.